Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 16, 2018 special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today, we're here to discuss National Grid proposal to bring a power line from Moobin to Wakefield, and then in response to hear the response from the Massachusetts Energy Facility Siting Board decision, Wakefield's grant of location permit to National Grid. So before we get started, we have several members in the audience that are here representing both the public and entities from the power company, as well as a couple of members in the audience that can speak to this board if necessary in regards to the oil fill piping. So if there was questions that the board wanted to ask, they would have that ability to ask these two individuals who have extensive background in that particular field. But before I start, I would like to direct the question to Mr. Mullin. Mr. Mullin, could you please tell this board what is anticipated of it by the end of its meeting in regards to whether or not a vote, how a vote being made and what type of a vote would that be?
Sure. The Energy Facility Siting Board issued its tentative decision this week on the 14th. They have set a comment period that ends on the 22nd, that's next week. Anyone who, any, who, any party such as the town of Wakefield is invited to comment during that period if they wish. If we, as a party, are content with the decision, then we need not say anything or do anything. If a party is dissatisfied with the decision in any way, then it should file a comment to that effect. The comments have to be grounded in the record. That is, we, it's too late to bring up new facts. This is the point where we have to rely exclusively on facts in the record. And then the, at the close of the comment period, the members of the board will review the comments in writing, and there's an opportunity for oral presentations before the board at their meeting on February 27.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Members of the board, the meeting that we have before us is now open for discussion. Do I have any take as to who would like to speak first on the matter? Seating on, Ed?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll say that when we last met on Monday and discussed this issue, there had been, you know, questions as to what the FSB would issue in its preliminary decision relative to both root and cable type. A lot of the discussion on Monday night focused on the cable type and the options of the XLPE versus the pipe type cable. The takeaway from that meeting, I believe, was that the board wanted to first see the report and then perhaps have additional information relative to the option of the pipe type cable. And I have invited here today two individuals who are representatives of Okanite, which is the, I believe, largest manufacturer of the cable in the country. They deal exclusively with the pipe type cable and would be able to answer questions that it had, they, anyone may have. In addition, the, they were able to review the discussion in the report relative to National Grid's representations of the pipe type versus the XLPE. So I think it would serve the public and the board's interests to be able to have them address any of the questions or, or concerns that we may have as a board so we can make an informed decision.
And just so that the board knows, as chairman, I'm going to allow members in the audience who are here of official capacity, who can speak to one way or the other, the option to speak at tonight, today's meeting if so there was a question being posed to them. So just to get that clear, so that, as to how that's being done. If someone is, wants to know particulars about something, if someone in the audience that is a member of either group can give us that answer, we will ask them to state their name and come to the table and they can answer the question. All I'm asking for is the board to, if they have questions amongst themselves, that's great. If they have any questions that need to be answered that way, ask the specific question to me, I'll ask them to come up and answer it. Okay? Just make it short and sweet and let's move on, and then we'll try to get everybody's concerns addressed. Other than that, what do we, who wants to, how do we want to start?
I must address, Mr. Chairman, that, if I may, that I sense the individuals that are connected with the pipe type cable and familiar with that, if perhaps they came up first and since they reviewed the report, I would be interested in, in their, their comments relative to what the report represents as far as pipe type cable as the option that was considered. I know that Winchester and Stonem in the report from the FSB, for example, went into a lot of detail in talking about pipe type cable and what they identified as, as the benefits to it. I know that National Grid had a response to it, but I'd be interested in hearing what these individuals could.
Do you have a specific question that, though, that you want to direct towards them in order for them to come up here? I don't want to let them come in and give a 15-minute presentation because that's new evidence, in my opinion. So if you have a specific question, that's why I asked at the beginning, if there's a specific question that you would like to ask of either Mr. Vigiano or Mr. Hood in regards to that, please ask that in the form of a question.
I guess my, my question is, having reviewed the report and the representations of pipe type cable, are you in agreement with what the report contains in that regard?
Mr. Vigiano or Mr. Hood, could one of you answer that question, and would one of you like to take the mic?
I certainly would take a, make a couple of comments about what we read from National Grid, if that's what you'd like. Do you want to see a sample of the cable while we're, while I'm up here?
Sir, I want you to sit down, just could you?
Just pull the bottom of it. Wouldn't that happen? This is what you.
Sir, could you just state your name and the company that you belong, that you're associated with, for the record, please?
Yep. Vic Vigiano with Okanite Wire and Cable.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Please just sit at the microphone.
Yes.
All right, give me just a second.
Thank you.
She brought a lot of paper. So, reading what National Grid had written about the installation of the cable and the design of the cable, what I wouldn't necessarily agree with is the footprint that the XLP cable would have with regards to the street. They're saying, I think, a four-foot wide trench with an eight-foot depth of burial. I would think that it would be slightly larger than that in order to get the pipe unless they were going to stack the two pipes on top of each other. Also, a high-pressure fluid-filled system would not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are you commenting on not your cable, the other cable now you're giving an opinion on?
No, well, let me show you what we were given. Yeah, but the question is, sir, sir.
I just want to make it clear.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
What you just said about the four-foot, with the footprint, footprint of the trench, are you talking about the, not your cable, but the other cable?
But the XLP cable, yes.
Okay, but that's not your business?
Well, no, but I mean, it's, but it's pretty factual what happened.
Yeah, but sir, but.
Well, go ahead, tell me. I don't sit in these meetings, so.
Okay, so I appreciate you coming, and seriously.
I really appreciate your coming. The question is, in, in, in what I, I think Mr. Dombrowski is asking is, what is the benefit that you feel is better for the pipe fill than?
Oh, absolutely, oh, okay. I apologize, I misread what you were asking.
And Ed, I mean, Tony, what?
I think we have to know, do you have a financial benefit if pipeline is used?
Well, I'm the, yeah, I prejudice myself by telling you that I am a cable manufacturer.
I think that's the first thing we should know. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, I mean.
Okay, are you the only cake of this type, are you the only manufacturer in this area of that type?
Well, we've outlasted our competitors, if that's what you're asking me, yes. We're the last manufacturer of.
If National Grid were to use this pipe, would you be the one that they would have to buy the product from?
Yes, we, well, we would bid it, right.
Then, Mr. Mullin, can we proceed at this time if they're doing one?
Oh, sure.
You can, okay. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure we're not filed of any.
Well, all right, so the, so a snapshot of the advantage of pipe type systems, they were established in 1940 primarily by Okanite. Of the design that you're looking at, there's almost 4.5 million feet of it in existence in the United States. For the, to your question about the footprint, a pipe type system would be installed in a much different way than the XLP system where if you were on a public street and the street was, what, 40 feet wide, you may cut a trench four and a half, five feet wide, and you'd lay these XLP cables in it. I think that it was written in that report that it would be seven and a half feet down at some point. A pipe type cable like this, even if there were two of them side by side, would, would take half that, and they would only be buried 39 to 45 inches. So they're not really taking as much, and they're not as technically difficult to install. In a comparative way, when you look at the technology that's out there, you know, the manufacturers who make XLP, I would think, and one of the National Grid guys may be able to comment on it, but I would suspect you'd get a length that would be maybe 1,500 feet long, where a pipe type cable would be somewhere 2,800 to 3,000 feet. Where that's significant to you is, in each instance, you're going to have to splice these cables together. So the footprint for the physical splice for an XLP cable, which is going to recur every 1,500 feet, the actual cavern or manhole, as it were, is going to be somewhere along the lines of 30 to 40 feet long and probably 15 feet wide. And you're going to do that every 1,500 feet, where with a pipe type system, you're going to have a much smaller manhole, maybe 20 feet, and you're only going to do that anywhere from 2,800 to 3,000, depending on where each town decides to put their core sampling. That's really what it determines it. Each length is a custom length from manhole one to manhole, how many ever you're going to have with, with the seven miles. One of the comments that I have heard in the past, maybe not related to what you all are doing today, but we put a dielectric fluid inside of the cable, and that dielectric fluid is made by various manufacturers, but I brought the MSDS sheet for the one that we specifically use. And the material, you know, it's called oil, it's called mineral fluid, has a bunch of different names, but basically it is not really a toxic material. I mean, if it's spilled, it needs to be cleaned up, but it's not something that's going to, if you clean it up, it's like anything else, right? So that would, that would be some distinction of the product. Those are generally the differences. I mean, XLP systems, again, and this may sound like a sales pitch, but I am a salesman, so you're going to hear it, they have no track record in this country. They, the statement was made by National Grid that the 345 KV systems have been in existence for 30 years. I'm not aware of that. I've been, I've been in this business for 35 years, and it's very limited, the, the applications for it. It's growing, certainly. You have a lot of hungry manufacturers from all over the world that have come to this country to, to try to capture that market because we are the last manufacturer. Our competitors have decided to go away from it, but just to throw some information at you, I mean, again, this, you're, you're not making a comparison, you're looking for an observation, but one of the things that I thought was interesting, and when we talk about the utilities that use it, I mean, you go up and down the East Coast, and there's, there's millions and millions of feet of this stuff that's been in existence since the 50s and 60s that's never failed. It just, and again, my, people here from National Grid and, and Brandon certainly, I mean, they deal with it as well, and they would have to be candid and tell you their opinion, but I think that they would reinforce what I'm saying to you, that this, this product does not fail. What has been said to not go with HPFF is because, yes, Okanite is the last manufacturer, but we're a 144-year-old company that is the largest manufacturer of wire and cable in North America. We are, actually, to maybe give you the other sales pitch, your municipality buys all of your underground cable exclusively from us. So we run your distribution system. The concern that I think was voiced in the, in the, not anymore, right, yeah. But the concern that was in that is that, well, what happens if we go out of the business? Well, again, we just invested $40 million in the factory in New Jersey where we make this, you know, I'm not being facetious in saying it to you, we're not going anywhere. I mean, we're, we're here to stay. And it's hard, I mean, again, I have prejudice, I work for the company, but from our perspective, I would think that would make, what would make it interesting for you to recommend back to your, the people who are watching you, is to actually put the two side by side. I know you have a recommendation from somebody, but if it's the cost, I would suggest to you that our cost would probably be the same, if not less. The reliability is there, proven track record, all of those other things. In a comparative way, you may be better off to see what would actually happen if they were bid against each other, and, and then make your decision. Both are recognized, and that's, that's the advantage. Ours happens to be a longer view than theirs, so. But that's, that's the way I see it. I mean, and again, I'm kind of tongue-in-cheek here because I only found out about coming here from last night.
Absolutely. We appreciate you two coming in Canada. Members of the board, anybody have questions regarding the oil fill pipe system?
Yes.
Go ahead. Who first? Mr. Fallaby? Go ahead.
I have kind of a slightly goofy question, but just, so, so what's up with the, the sample there? So is that, is that outer pipe would be filled with the, whatever, the dielectric fluid and, and those three, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, right. So, yeah, so this is a perfect example of, this is typically what would be there. This cable, again, I need to take my sales hat off, but this was actually a pretty cool job because this job was done down in Virginia, and this cable length was 7,500 feet, and UTEC Constructors was able to take two pieces of this and tie it together right out in the middle of a river and install it. So in general, what would happen is this would be installed in the ground 39 inches to 45 inches. In the instance that National Grid pointed out where there would need to be two circuits side by side, there would be another cable 18 inches apart, or another pipe 18 inches apart. It would be surrounded by what's called weak concrete, which is a thermal concrete to protect the cable and also add to the impacity capability of the cable. Inside of it will be three, 3,000 KC mill conductors, and then a dielectric fluid that would go in it. Now, again, the.
So, sorry, so that cross-section would be around those cables in that cross-section?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is what it would look like in the ground.
Be filled with, with the dielectric fluid that's kept at?
Would be inside of this.
200 PSI or something like that, right?
Correct.
And you have a station at each end, or however it works, to, to maintain that pressure, or?
Well, what would happen in this situation, and again, I would have to verify this with how National Grid would do it, or N-Star would do it, or Eversource would do it, but most likely what they would do with a pipe type system is they would circulate the two between, they would circulate the dielectric fluid between each of the pipes and keep it moving. By moving it, the impacity would increase.
Okay. Got it, I'm good.
It's a long one.
I think it was me, too, but it's okay.
Tony, Tony, it was nice of him to say that.
Mr. May, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. You alluded to the, the mineral oil again, which is, is one of the critical points for me based on both systems we have. I mean, I, I went into this thinking that the mineral oil was fine, and then at the last session, there was a lot of questions that popped up, and the report came out, a lot of things happened in between, but, so, and Anne had brought up a bunch of things too about what she's read, and she's done some discovery there for the toxicity, but you're saying it's definitely not toxic. I know we're, we maybe.
It's not a carcinogen.
It's not, okay.
Can I?
That's a, yeah, go ahead, yeah, expand on that.
Would you like this?
That's a big, that's a big point.
Can I give you this?
Is it a Class 1 or a Class 3?
Well, the, the fluid that we use is, if you look at the top of the page, right, it's, ours is the O6E, right? There's, there's various types of fluids that salt it. If you all are looking at the, what they refer to as the MSDS sheet for this material, is that the page you're referring to? Okay, if you go to page four, and then you go to section 11, and you go down to where it says carcinogenicity, I didn't say that right, but it's not classified as that. It's not a carcinogen.
Okay.
But I know, again, to go further on that, when, when this fluid goes in here, and again, and I have a, a whole group of guys here who have been in this business as long as I have, it's very rare that this is going to come out of here. It's not, it's not a process of it where holes are being popped out of this pipe, you know, I mean, and if it is a hole, it's not, it's not a gaping hole, it's a, it's a small pinhole, or, and that is determined by how you protect the pipe with cathodic protection, which in this instance, I'm sure, based on the history that National Grid and Eversource has, if they ended up doing this, that this would be belts and suspenders, this would have everything that it would need to have to be protected. And again, not as a criticism of the XLP, but when, when you look at the systems, if you drive into Boston, or if you go anywhere in, around metropolitan Massachusetts, I mean, these systems, these pipes have been sitting in the ground for 60, 70 years, and they're not going to fail, it's, so. But again, that's a salesman's bias.
Thank you. Any other member from the board?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
If a line does need to be repaired, if it goes down, what's the compare and contrast, the length of time between the pipeline and the XLP?
Well, I, I don't know the load that you have on, that, what the, the exact load would this be, but if, if in fact we were going to install two pipes and you lost one of them, you would never lose power, you would lose the full capacity of it, but in order to repair this, if it were, if it were a split, if it were at a, a manhole, it would probably take less time, but if you had to go and actually investigate finding this hole, if you use that process, and I'll give you my knowledge of it from, from doing this for as long as I have, I would generally say if the cable were available, which you will have a spare piece of the cable, from the start to finish, and anybody else want to chime in, I'm going to say that you'd probably be down for less than three weeks on that.
Does that compare with XLP?
Uh, XLP, depending, if it were in the, if.
Same, same type of locations.
If, all right, well, how bad a failure? If the, if the manhole blew up and you took out all four of the lines in the manhole, you'd be in big trouble. But if you only lost one, you could probably have it replaced within a week. I would say seven days. Any, any question on that?
They haven't been called.
All right.
Burst into the scene back there.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
That's fine. Anybody else from the board in regards to the pipe? Ed?
I know that you had mentioned that you are a supplier for Wakefield, so we currently have this pipe type cable?
No, no, oh, gosh, no, no. You used all your distribution cable, your 13-8 system and your formerly 4160. No, you don't have any extra high voltage here underground.
As of yet.
Well, hopefully. I'm on, I'm, I'm an optimist.
But you, but your company has been, so you've been, you've been supplying our town already, though?
Well, we're, we're, well, the longer story, we're a cable manufacturer who bids on municipality work, and we've been successful at bidding the distribution cables to the municipality for 25 years.
It's currently in use by the MLB.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, okay. Not this particular product, okay.
No, you have a good system. You have a very, you have a many generations of municipality people who.
And we thank them everything.
Absolutely. You go, they go home Saturday night, there's no problem. Yeah, I get it. And you guys have a good system.
Anybody else have a comment?
You had also had, there also been some questions about just the, the infrastructure footprint and also the ability to, for installing the cable in terms of the flexibility of, of install. How do they, that was raised in the report, how do they compare?
Well, I, I mean, you, again, if, if you've ever watched an excavator work, right, they're going to, you're going to cut into the middle of your roads, some narrow, some wide. I, I don't necessarily agree with their comment about the width of the trench, I mean, but in the same regard, it doesn't really matter for the XLP how wide the trench is. What you're doing is you're putting four individual eight-inch pipes, which are about the same size as this, this is 10, but you're going to put four of those pipes in the same, they're going to be made out of plastic, they're going to surround them with some form of protection, and after that's installed, you're relying on that to not move, not do anything else. I mean, this is a steel pipe that's buried in concrete, it's not going to move. So I would say in a comparative way, you're still going to cut a trench, you're not going to make as many of those obtrusive manholes along the way because you don't have to, because you're going further distances. And to go back over the failure, if an XLP cable fails, right, for whatever reason, I mean, if it fails again, I mean, if you have a, if it keeps recurring, right, with a HPFF system, I don't know that you have that much history of repetitive failure, it's not going to be a pattern, right? So that's, that's the only other comparison of that.
And the history that you have of, say, the reliability history, call it, that you're saying this goes back to when?
Well, I'm going to leave you all with this. This is a document that, this goes back to three, this is only 345,000 volt. This cable is also made at 115,000 volt and 230. So of all installations, since this goes back to 1950, but it's recorded from 1970, you're looking at almost 18 million feet of cable, whether it's the laminate that's today or the regular old, and you all can have this, this is, this is just a document that lists who the customer was, the length of the project, and how it was installed.
Thank you. Members of the board, is there anybody else that has a question right now regarding this man's information? If, go ahead.
Would two of those pipes, I thought you said side by side, be installed?
Right, so imagine if you had one, you'd put one 12 to 18 inches next to it.
Next to it, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And they would be encased in concrete.
Okay.
One more question, Ed.
Just to, just to confirm the, you know, you, you spoke about the, the fluid not being carcinogenic, so we, we've covered that, but, so we understand the, the opportunities for leak, leaks, because that's been another concern that is raised. If there was to be some sort of compromise to the pipe, is, how is, how's it normally happen? Is it someone digging to it, or like, you know, what, what are the scenarios?
Well, not being an expert on it, but having heard from the utilities that deal with it, I would say dig-ins would probably be number one. Corrosion of the pipe because it's not protected correctly would be another factor, but it's not going to shear, it's not going to be like the road heaves that we have up here in the dead of winter. I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to break, the pipe isn't going to break, as it were, so.
And from the corrosion piece of that, what has been your history? And you said it's been so for a while, what's in the history?
It's funny, I mean, again, I brought some, I brought home movies, right? I brought pictures of projects that were done in Cambridge, Mass. that go back to when I first started in this business, and you talk to the people who were involved in it back then, and they, and they remind you of, they were starting with this cathodic protection that was in the pipe, and it, and they can gauge how long it lasts and that, and there's been no degradation of the pipe in those, I'm talking about 1988, '87, that seems to work fine. I mean, it's not to say that it couldn't happen, but I would say that I would put, if I were betting, or if I was spending your money, I would put 4,500,000 feet into whatever is compared to what the XLP people from all. is compared to what the XLP people from all over the world who are going to try to bid this, as opposed to a US manufacturer. I would put our footage against theirs because I don't think there's that much of it in this country. I really don't.
Okay.
No, I, I appreciate this. I'm just, can we go back to, to why we're here and what we need to decide? Because I'm feeling like it's a sales pitch.
No, 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 I'm done.
So if there's a motion that we, you know, we want to ask Town Council Mullen to write a proposal, a counter comment that we want to use these pipes, then let's, let's talk about that. I totally, I, I agree with the process that you talked about. I just don't know, we kind of started with a sales pitch. So let's take a step back, right? There were two, and, and we have this great, we had a subcommittee who had lots of meetings on this. So Ed, Tony and Ann. I'd love to know what you guys want to do. So if, if your proposal is like, we want to use these pipes, great, let's talk about that. I just, I don't, I'm going to sit here with a sales pitch. And then we can talk about the route too, based on what the report and everything said. So those are kind of our two issues. Let's talk about that. Because I just think, you know, what, what National Grid, what pipe they're going to use, that's not, we can, we can comment on that if that's what we decide.
Well, I, my understanding was that, that was the purpose of today's meeting. After Monday night, when I had, when I had made that motion, I was, the sense, the sense that I had, the consensus of, of five of you was that it was premature. You wanted to see what the report said first, and then we'd make a determination as to whether we wanted to comment. And most of the discussion on Monday night talked about if we were to comment, making sure that, that Attorney Mullen had enough time to do that. So I thought it was important, since there were a lot of open questions, that we have someone, rather than all of us Googling and just trying to, you know, read the tea leaves of this, but to have someone who could speak to this pipe type cable, which was the alternative that I was suggesting on Monday night, and I am again suggesting today. So I wanted to be sure things like reliability, things like, is this, you know, this, is it carcinogenic? Those sorts of questions were answered so that everyone felt as if they were fully enough informed to be able to make the decision that is best for this town. So ultimately, what, what I am asking, you know, will be asking of Mr. Chairman at the appropriate time is that we, we do in fact, I want to, I bring a motion for us to vote on, to comment back to the EFSB in this, in a similar way that Winchester and Stonem have in what, in the decision, as you see right now, seeking that pipe type cable be reconsidered as the more appropriate transmission line for this project.
So the question I have is, if it's such an easy decision, why did the companies decide to go with XLP? I'm not, I don't, you know, they, there was a, there's a good reason why they decided to use XLP. If it is such a no-brainer and we can switch them out, which I'm not convinced it is, I'm, you know, I read in the report why they decided, but it's.
Would you like to have someone from National Grid to make a determination? No?
No.
Why would we want them to switch it?
No, 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 but.
No.
The question that she's asking right now. Why would we want them to switch it? I don't even, why do we, you don't have to answer.
Right.
Right. No, that's my, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, if it, if it's as easy as this. But based on the report I'm reading, it's not quite that easy. The only, the only way I would hear for, what I would like to hear is if the folks from National Grid, if they have an issue with what was said at the table. If they disagree with the trench.
So would you like to bring someone from National Grid to the table?
At some point, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But doesn't have to be now.
So I just want to make sure that's clear.
If I could just speak to that comment, because I think it's an important question, Anne, that you asked. And I think the answer is that, in looking at the report, the, I think the undercurrent of the National Grid position is that they were saying that that was one of cost. And as I had mentioned on Monday night, I think that there's a distinction between our town priorities and National Grid's priorities. And I fully recognize that if National Grid has calculated that this pipe type cable, they believe to be more expensive, although I think there is a question about whether the XLPE expense would go up if in fact they had to dig down deeper, which they've acknowledged is an uncertainty right now. But setting that aside, I think from a business perspective, National Grid sees this as XLPE, at least at first blush, appears to be a less expensive option. Our fiduciary responsibility, our responsibility to the town is to look at what's best for the town. And I think that the, the cost is not a consideration, not a consideration for us. And I think we want to do what's best for the town.
And I have always done what's best for this town.
I understand, we all have that objective.
My concern is that I, I didn't, when, in reading the report, I don't just see it as about cost.
I, I think, I think much, much of the discussion, if you go back to the, especially the early parts of it. So I, I guess what, what I'm trying to get at with this is, we, the biggest issue that had, that had been raised by the town that, that I think we've collectively heard from our public forums has been the EMF consideration. This pipe type cable, as, as already been acknowledged as of Monday, in essence eliminates that concern. I think from the town's perspective, if we have an option that eliminates the EMF perspective, but at the same time, you know, provides the opportunity for the cable to be running through, I don't see any basis for us not to pursue that. And if it's an additional cost to National Grid, that's a National Grid issue, not a town of Wakefield issue. And there were concerns about what the fluid, and we, we had some uncertainty on Monday night based on the fluid. We now have that answered. There are concerns about what would happen, you know, the vulnerability of the pipe. It sounds like basically it's a dig safe issue like most other things, like a gas line would be. So I think that's important for us to know in making this decision. Because ultimately, our, our decision is what's best for Wakefield, not what's best for National Grid's bottom line. And they don't necessarily have to be mutually exclusive, but they sometimes may not be aligned.
And, and, and I just, hold on a second. To speak to you, I don't agree as far as the toxicity either. I'm going to go with the World Health Organization for, for, as a standard. I think they deal with this on a more regular basis. They classify untreated mildly treated mineral oils as a group one carcinogen. Okay?
Again, I, this is their document.
I know, okay. To humans, mostly refined oils are group three, meaning they are not suspected to be carcinogenic. But available information is not sufficient to classify them as harmless. There's a possibility, there's probable doubt. Okay? So I'm just saying, by what they're telling me here, from what I'm reading, they're saying there's a possibility it could be.
Absolutely, yeah. I can't comment either. I'm working off a sheet of paper on that. It's an MSDSG.
And I am too. I'm, I'm, I'm working off of a sheet of paper. So I'm only saying, I'm not convinced that it's not, and I'm not convinced that the oil isn't harmful, if it should breach. And that's only if it should breach. There's a possibility that it could, it's a possibility that it couldn't. Yes.
So I feel like we've kind of, twice now, blown by a few stop signs. Like, we're going to debate the efficacy of this pipe. As I just said, why are we asking them to change it? And, and we kind of skipped, the important question is, I, I think, based on the discussion, because I'm, I have been sitting here for these two meetings, that it's, we believe that implicit in that is some belief or consensus on this board that there's a problem with the magnetic field that will be generated by the pipe that's being proposed. Is that, is that what we're, so I think we skipped that and just assumed everybody's.
We haven't discussed the report, so we have.
Yeah, right. We haven't discussed the report. So.
And to address.
Let me know when you'd like to.
We have to address the report.
Hold on. Let me know when you'd like to start discussing the report. I'm happy to give you my opinion and thoughts on it. Which is actually why we're meeting today, is to discuss the report.
Forty minutes on the pipe. I'm going to close the discussion on the pipe for the time being. And we're going to go into discussion on the actual report and the concerns of this board on the report. Would anyone like to pick one spot?
I have two spots, if it's okay. So my, my first spot is actually around, I'll do the fun one first, operational noise. So there's lots of other things in this report, a lot of other things in the report. So operational noise, as we, we keep citing, the, we're worried about the people of our town. Well, there happens to be one individual in this town who's actually an intervenor and named in the report as somebody who actually went to the lengths of becoming part of this case because he and his neighborhood had a concern. So I called him. His concern is operational noise because he lives near the actual facility itself. So my one question that I would have, I don't want an answer just yet, but let's, if we don't mind, let's log it, is that this 15-foot-high, 260-foot-long sound wall being built around the actual facility itself, according to page, you know, the, the, the companies on page 113 says, "would not result in any noise increases." That's a quote. And, but it did say that that's at wherever these sensitive receptor locations are. I would just like to hear a little more info on, hey, 15-foot, 260-foot-long wall sounds like a pretty good effort in trying to address the concerns of this town and remediate some issues. I just wonder, I think there's a wall on the other side. Is, is sound going to bounce back and forth? Is it really going to not result in any noise increases? And then I just kind of have the what if, what if there's an oops at the end of this project and it actually caused some bouncing or attenuation that was unforeseen, and it's actually louder? You know, can we get some promise to, to actually remediate? Instead of saying, we're going to build this wall, how about a commitment to ensure that the decibel levels in that neighborhood are actually reached some, some maximum point? And so you just got to keep trying until such time as you achieve the result. Don't just build a wall and all, have all of us hope that it works. That would be my first actual concern in, in reading this and talking to our one person intervened. So let's make sure that's, that's real. So the other issue that I, in reading this, I'll tell you this, I was disappointed in, in how the, the board actually addressed magnetic fields. I thought that they would take the opportunity they had to kind of coalesce the, they did a good job of saying, here's, here's, they lay out very well. Here's what the companies, as they call them, say. Here's what the towns and other people, here's their opinion, and they kind of, in all of these issues, brought them together. I thought they, they stopped short of saying the magnetic field is not an issue. What they just said was, here's, here's the, the company's numbers, and cited this fact that, quote, "reasonable and practical methods to mitigate magnetic fields should be employed." So, you know, that left me a little wanting on, is this dangerous? The question that's really in front of us. So we have people in our town who say it might be dangerous, and that seems to be the math. So here's how I came out on it. The guidelines, I love how you guys say the, is it ICNR? That's how, is that what you guys say? That's what our, ICNR, whatever they are. So the, the nationwide or worldwide entity on this stuff says that the exposure guidelines, again, because there are no federal guidelines, for some reason the Fed said this isn't important enough to create a guideline. There are no state guidelines because the states didn't view, the state didn't view it for some reason as a serious enough health issue that they should have any kind of guideline or regulation. So, excuse me, regulation. So ICNR says 2,000 milligahs is okay for both acute and continued exposure. Acute meaning I walked by something with 2,000 milligahs. Continued, I slept next to something that has 2,000 milligahs. The Massachusetts regulation is 85. Sounds a little more reasonable to me. Again, acute and, and continuous is 85. This project at its worst places, where there's a splice, for example, achieves 58, 53.8 milligahs. That's three feet above the road. So that's not where people sleep by any means. And we all know, and I think we've been educated well enough, that as you get further away from these things, the, the exposure drops significantly, such that only 20, 20 feet away, 53.8 becomes 11 milligahs. And for the regular usage, that, that would be at the splice places. So at, at the regular, you know, locations, it's 41.2, three feet above it, and only four milligahs 20 feet away. Which for me, for 98%, and that's a number I made up, but I'm smart enough, it's probably 98% of the houses aren't 20 feet to the street. Maybe it's 75% or something. So it's, it's not a ton. It's 4.4 milligahs. So what are, the thing I've been struggling with, what the hell is 4.4 milligahs? Sounds a lot less than 2,000, but does it even matter, you know? And looking at some of the other stuff that was presented and talking to a few folks, you know, 4.4 milligahs is, is, just, just here's a comparison. If you have a fluorescent lamp near you, okay? If you're two feet away from it, you're at 4.4 milligahs. If you're one foot close to it, you're at like, you know, 10. If you're really right next to it, it's, it's over 1,000 milligahs being next to a fluorescent lamp. Things like TVs, hair dryers, fans, vacuum cleaners, all of these things give off very high levels of this stuff. Again, the, I'm focused on acute and constant. So it's this constant exposure as well as acute. So I know these things aren't on all the time, but I haven't heard anybody say that you add it all up. In fact, I heard people say that if you put it all together, sometimes it actually cancels it out. So I'm not concerned about the additive impact of this. So I guess at the end of the day, you know, I think this is a two-step process. One, is it dangerous? Is it something we need to address? And number two, if it is, what are we doing about it? So is it dangerous? I would suggest that it was dangerous, that the way that these power, these lines were dragged through neighborhoods was dangerous, and that the, what's been mitigated, you know, the reasonable practical mitigation? Somebody said, hey, if we bury them, it'll help out a lot. So now we're burying them. And I think we're, we've actually seen the industry as a whole take reasonable and practical steps to mitigate. And that, that's the standard, and that's what's going on. So I'm, I'm comfortable actually that putting it underground, it mitigates it, that the resulting levels of milligahs, and we, we had the report from our own expert, said that the models that are used turn out to be dead-on accurate. You model something, and then you build it, and then you measure it, it was like one-to-one, I mean, dead-on. So I'm comfortable that the, that the proposed, that our own expert that we hired said that the, the as modeled milligahs exposures will be at these levels. I'm comfortable where they are. So I'm not feeling, go figure, the need to switch the pipe or impose any, any further changes on this. And I would say we, we shouldn't, I, I'm not in favor or interested in, in sending any comments back that says, we think this is terrible and needs to be changed. So that's where I've come out on it. Again, carefully. It does trouble me because there is this, this open door there of like, well, you know, I always wonder, why do they still say they, we should take reasonable and practical methods to mitigate? That, that means everybody kind of acknowledges, well, there might be something there. But certainly it hasn't risen to the level that has, you know, urged the state or the federal government to even make a regulation about it. So I'm not sure I want to regulate that right here in this, in this board. So that's, that's where I am. Those are my readings.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's get that wall addressed.
Ed? Just, just on your points, Brian, and I respect your opinion on that. When you talk about the, the calculations that Dr. Cabot did, Dr. Cabot did those calculations based upon the forecasts that were only through 2023. And in fact, in the report itself on page 20, they acknowledge that the design of the transmission system solution was a reasonable, with a reasonable margin of capacity, rather than just meeting the minimum LTE value, to ensure the transmission system would meet current and future system needs, consistent with good engineering practices. And I think that's, that's where the concern lies. I think it's twofold. One, we only have, the, they've only done the numbers through 2023. They don't know what the future needs are going to be, but they do know that there is future capacity. So we're not at max capacity with these lines. So I would call these numbers a floor, not a ceiling at this point. And Dr. Cabot and National Grid both acknowledge that current has a direct, increased current is, is directly related to increased EMF. So I think that's a concern. The other piece is, referring to Dr. Cabot's report, he did acknowledge that the EMF science is inconclusive. He did say that there is an association, and that's generally accepted. And in association, you know, there's a reason that there have been decades of this study, you know, of, of the leukemia piece. There's a reason for that, and there's a reason that is ongoing. I get it. You know, Dr. Cabot, our expert, identified it as the connection to this point remains hidden. And I respect that. The scientific community just doesn't know, but there's obviously enough concern to continue to, to pursue this. So there's something there. We just don't know what the, the there there is. And if we know that much, if we have an opportunity here as a town to pursue an option that National Grid and Dr. Cabot acknowledge reduce EMF by 90 to 90-plus percent, I just don't see why we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, so let me just respond a little bit. So, so the, the fact that it's inconclusive to me after, I think it can go either way. There's been decades of study, and we haven't found it yet, so it must be there. There's been decades of study, and we haven't found it yet. I think every decade that goes by, you know, and we don't find it, probably suggests that it, maybe it's not there. We're not doing something wildly irresponsible here. We're saying, okay, this is an accepted practice in the industry. The studies and the guidelines all indicate that what's being proposed here are safe. There's a discussion in this report about using the LTE, you know, the maximum load of the pipe, of the, of the cable versus, versus its projected load. I, I read that as well. I'm comfortable with it. At the end of the day, I really thought about this. I, I view this board, one of the key roles of this board is kind of, for me, is a backstop that I take very seriously. When people have a problem in this town and they, you know, who do I turn to? Generally, they can come here and, and there's an ear here that will listen. You know, we had it in some pretty dramatic dog cases. We had somebody's dog who was kind of terrorizing a neighborhood, and we had to sit here and say, you know, they went to the police, the dog catcher, and there's. say, you know, they went to the police, the dog catcher, and there's the law limited what 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 could be done, so they came here. And we said, if that dog's not, if that dog is still in this town next week, we're taking it and we're going to destroy it. We made a hard decision. But those people came here because they had nowhere else to turn. All other avenues for relief were were not available to them. This was their only stop. And so I take it seriously, like, we made a hard decision there. And here, you know, it it would appear we're making a hard decision here, but then I thought about, well, what are we doing? So and I started thinking about, you know, this is the big company coming in telling us it's safe. That's what we're hearing. And so what pops to mind? Tobacco, right? Tobacco made a killing years of fooling the entire country, the world. Tobacco's safe, they hid reports, they, we don't have that here. We have decades of studies. We have, nobody can hide anymore in this information age. So it's not like there's a hidden report that says electromagnetism or the magnetic fields, it's not electric fields, it's magnetic fields only are what comes from here, that there's no hidden report out there that says magnetic fields are going to kill people, and let's just put that in the in the big dark file cabinet. It just doesn't work that way anymore, and it's been studied and analyzed, and nobody's coming up with anything, is what I'm hearing. The other thing that I don't see us doing here is making a decision in the face of science. And that example, to me, is is most closely related to the, and sort of getting into too much politics here, the climate deniers, right? I got I got reports and everybody saying, this is going to destroy the earth, whatever, all the scientific reports, data, empirical data, we've got pictures, if you can only handle a picture, you can actually see glacial melt. If you want to see stats on it, there's stats on it. It's empirical data in your face saying, this is happening, and people are saying, no, it's not. So I don't think we're doing anything near that here. Nobody's saying it's happening. In fact, you just said, you know, as is the case, we don't even know it's happening, and nobody can even find a real link. And so so I don't think we're we're doing a disservice to the town or to the people, and I think we're we're acting very reasonably and responsibly in saying, what's being proposed here is is something that's done in regular practice. There's no hidden science or a smoking gun somewhere. They're not acting in bad faith. I don't think they're acting out of greed. In fact, this this newer pipe seems to be the wave of the future, sorry. I think that, and I think that the the overall project, the reason we're burying it, is in fact, the mitigation that that we would seek if they were proposing to put it on a telephone pole. So that's a, or some overhead method, but so that's that's where I am. And again, I take very seriously the role that we have in this board to kind of be the last, the backstop and the protector. And I think in this case, you you always end up having to make a hard decision. For me, the the science, the data, the facts, the positions of all the parties, I'm not feeling like we need, like, I I wouldn't be in favor of writing anything back that says you need to switch the pipe, so.
Tony, keep doing that, sorry.
Listen to you, Brian, for a little bit. It sounded, there's something that we just haven't found yet. It sounded like we're looking for Bigfoot because we've been looking for you all these years, and there's something that we haven't found. But to address one of your points about the sound mitigation for the substation, during one of the subcommittee hearings, I think we negotiated some trees, some promises from National Grid, if I'm correct?
They went back to SBA, I believe. If you could, please, if you could take the chair, thank you on that.
And I've got a couple of comments after that, Paul.
Yep.
Paul, I'm going to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No one on pro?
State your name, please, and.
Richard Jones, project manager, National Grid. Couple of qualifications in the sound. We're not building a sound wall completely around the substation.
Southwest.
Angle piece, southwest corner, exactly. What we're looking at right now is proceeding with that. Then we've talked with several of the residences. We're going to put sound measurement equipment out, and we agreed about March timeframe. We're going to measure what's we've got out there, and then we're going to relook at this. There's also sound barriers already inside the substation, to your point about reflective noise. Yep. But the the thought, moving forward, and we'll commit to it, is basically deploying sound measurement equipment. And I want to say, Dan McIntyre is the expert here, but I want to say there's at least five locations that we've identified, where we're going to put equipment in the field and then reanalyze.
And then what we do with that? Then at the end of the project, if it's higher, you'll take whatever, you'll do whatever you're going to do.
Yeah, we'll have some type of mitigation, but we have to know what the problem is before we can.
No, that's great. That's that's kind of a saying about the wall, like, let's hope it works, but if it doesn't.
Well, the modeling right now, in accordance with the the report, is we're going to be at the same level or slightly below, maybe 1 dB, I think was in the report, something like that. But the the whole idea here is, we've heard from the various residents, we know there's an issue, we're going to deploy equipment, and then we have to see what we're going to do to mitigate. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I'm good. Do you have a thing we've talked about, I'm not going to beat EMF into the the ground anymore, but was the Salem versus New Salem Street route? And if you look at page 54, it talks about the New Salem Street variation. It would increase costs, but the location would be subject to flooding, and the instability of the soils along New Salem Street would require a reinforced duct bank. So I think it was something we looked at, but unfortunately, I don't think it's going to work, and the Salem Street, you know, route will take place.
I would agree with that. The company looked at that extensively. In fact, I think the town's on record with a letter to the EFSP in 2015 not recommending that route. Where the the instability of peat and the soil conditions just create some significant civil problems. Trying to build a cable here to improve reliability and putting it in those type of situations isn't, isn't the direction, you know, the company wants to go in terms of improving the reliability of the system. We can comment on it officially if you want to, if you want us to, but I think they've discussed it significantly. I know. Good.
Thank you.
We can address some of the points that came up with a pipe-type cable, if you want us to, you're going.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
Not on that, I have another comment.
Okay, let's go with the comment that there's time for us.
Your meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Kind of to jump off of what Brian said, I don't, I'm not convinced there's any there there. The study that showed an association with childhood leukemia was from 1979 and has not since then over, and that was in Denver, Colorado, it was on overhead lines. It has not replicated itself to show any causal connection. It's, it hasn't come up in any of the animal testing. And to me, that's the strongest argument. In, like Brian, I I don't take this, the position on this board lightly at all, certainly when it comes to issues like that, but I don't, to me, as opposed to climate change, this reminds me a little bit of the vaccines and autism, that, you know, there's an increase in autism, people want to make that connection, but study after study has not shown that connection. I also want to comment, I'm not, that Winchester and Stonem are jumping on the bandwagon to intervene at this point, doesn't make me want to jump on that bandwagon either. They were not as involved in this discussion three years ago with National Grid and Eversource. Steve, Rick, and Tom were. Wakefield was much more involved in making sure that this project was done in a safe manner, to making sure the project, you know, fighting against the route, they wanted to come down Prospect Street, that was a problem for a lot of reasons. And they were involved in that. Winchester and Lubrin were slightly late to the party, and I and I'm not convinced that just because they say something is so that I want to jump on as a board member. In reading everything and being on the subcommittee and in listening to citizens' concerns, you know, I was contacted probably by five people three months ago. We had two citizen liaisons on this board, on our committee, that have not contacted me about any of their concerns. I have not been contacted by anyone. Three years ago, I was not contacted by anyone about the route, about their concerns. And in, actually, I was contacted by someone who's in the audience, who I responded back to, and I appreciate everything he said as well. But there's, I haven't had a groundswell of people who are telling me that this is a terrible thing. Is it inconvenient? Of course it will be, you know. I had part of our street dug up that was a pain in the neck to to go around. But I am just like Brian, I'm not sure there's enough here for me to say I want to undo what the company's clearly spent a lot of time and effort putting together this proposal.
Hold on a second. Are you going to ask a question about the this, or are you going to rebut what's been said?
I was going to respond to Ann's comment.
I I would rather hear your concerns about the report first and then I'll let you rebut.
That's fine. As far as the report goes, I mean, I do think it goes into considerably detail, talking about when Winchester and Stonem each intervened, which was well before Wakefield did. And they did, and Winchester and Stonem did a lot of other things, they hired on experts, and they routed a different route and all that. So I don't know that, frankly, what they did is independent of what we're doing, we make our own town decision, but I don't think it's fair to say that they had not been engaged in this process in a meaningful way early on. I mean, we were intervenors well after they.
Of course, they intervened, they weren't involved in back dealing with National Grid and Eversource three years ago, as in much detail as we were.
And that may be. But I think, you know, what we want to address, you know, some of what's in the report here, it's uncontroverted that the EMF reduction is is at least 90% through the pipe-type cable. It's also uncontroverted that National Grid has identified pipe-type cable as a viable option, it's just not the preferred option. And I think that's where my hangup is, mentioning studies, Ann. We may have had a 1979 study, there have been plenty of studies since, and our own expert that we had retained for this purpose, he had talked about the strength of the evidence, we have that on page 27 of his report, and he identifies childhood leukemia, strength of evidence is limited. Others were ruled out, lack of effect, lack of effect. Those are definitive or declarative statements, I think, in the science community. Inadequate is, I take just one step up from, you know, declaratively, no. But limited is still open. So I guess, you know, it brings it back to, just so I'm clear, National Grid and Eversource, you would still do this project even if EFSP had required you to do the pipe-type cable, correct?
The project is required for transmission reliability.
So you would still do the project if if pipe-type cable had had been, you would have been instructed by the EFSP decision to use pipe-type cable, correct?
The EFSP directs the construction, yeah.
So I guess what I'm getting at is if, yeah, we don't know what we don't know, but none of us are scientists, and who knows what will come down the the pipe? We do know that there's an open question, none of us can say with certainty that there's not, you know, a link, we just don't know. And rather than trying to bank on the fact that because we don't know now means that it doesn't exist, why don't we err on the side of saying, okay, residents have expressed, and and I know I've gotten a number of calls, I know Maureen has been contacted as well by residents on this.
Three months ago.
Right, when it became an issue back in November.
And I said.
Yeah.
Three months ago.
And I think that if we have an opportunity here as a town to mitigate, I mean, the whole part, point of of our subcommittee and Dr. Cabot's report was to look at ways that we could improve this project for our town. And if we, you know, one of the, Dr. Cabot speaks, you know, to the pipe-type cable as well, and some of the advantages, obviously, including the EMF piece. So that that had been raised by by a number of residents. We were all at the meeting back in November, we know the resident concern on that. If we know that exists, and if we know that there's a viable alternative to it that is not going to preclude National Grid from installing the transmission line that they want to install, I just don't see any basis for us not to err on the side of caution with this. It doesn't have any negative, and burying the line doesn't change the EMF emissions, that, you know, that's, that's not the issue here. But, you know, net net, if we can achieve the same objective of more reliable transmission coming through this town, but but knowingly eliminate an unknown with the EMF, why would we not do that?
Because I'm not, I mean, I don't agree with your suppositions.
I don't think you're not convinced, Sam, but that, just because you're not convinced doesn't mean that it's not true, do you know what I mean? And that's where, that's what I'm like, but you do know that 90% plus EMF emission reduction by pipe type, so that that is unknown. So if we're dealing just with the knowns here.
You've never lost it.
You know, it's, I just, I have, I just can't wrap my head around it, you know, this.
Clearly, I know, you don't understand, I, and I'm having trouble seeing your agenda sticking to it like that.
Instead of keep going back and forth, I really want to hear either questions regarding the report that was before us, or if anyone has direct questions to the people in there. And please, everything through me, please, so that we can make sure that it's not going back and forth. We need to address what's before us now and make a decision today. We can't prolong this to another meeting, the decision has to be made today. I'm hoping that we can make the decision before I need to leave the table, okay? So I would like to be part of this decision.
I'd like to hear from our light department, we have two representatives that are here.
Excellent, I would too. I I think that that's a good point. Mr. DeHarm, would you care to come to the table?
I would agree with the, Peter and I are from the Wakefield Gaslight Department. I would agree with the comments that we've been involved with the development of the project since it started in concept almost three years ago. Rick, Steve, we've all been involved since the beginning. In terms of the type of design that's used, we technically don't have an issue with the ELP, so we we don't see a problem with with that design. We do fully agree that the better route is the Salem Street route. We can speak to the the water issue on New Salem Street from our gas perspective, so the route that's proposed is the right route. Any other issues or?
Can you go into that a little bit more? Because for me, so when I look at construction and I understand flood, you know, I can learn about flood and and that sort of stuff, and you guys have been in discussion for a long time. But for me, as a member of this town, it makes more sense to go through a business district. You're you're inconveniencing residents less, right? That's why you have a business district. So can you, can you talk a little bit more about that?
So if I look at just, I've been here 10 years, anytime we get a heavy rain, that's the street that gets closed, so this is going to be sitting at or underwater all the time. So any, any issues you're going to have are going to be within that that area, that's the, that's the most, to me, that's the biggest risk to this project, would be the fact that you're going to have this 345 line sitting underwater most of the time. So that's why, early on, as we began meeting with them several years ago, we proposed continuing down the railroad right of way out to Salem, and then come up Salem Street. We do understand that it it will pass by more residences that way, but I think overall design-wise, we've also minimized it on the other side by using the railroad right of way as much as humanly possible as well. So we felt that the compromise there, we do feel that the, it is the better route.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if it's going to be to you to address this to, or DPW, or both of you at the same time, actually. When you get to the narrower streets, and I was reading this and that, in most of the conditions, the report said that most of our streets can handle the trench being dug plus traffic being moved. What happens on those streets that are tighter? Do we end up closing them down? Do we end up having to do the work at night? They're already saying that when it goes by the, one of the schools, they're telling them that it has to be done on weekends or nights. What happens when it goes by the Galvin? Is the same condition applied?
The the conditions are going to vary throughout the route, and we're working on that now. We've met three times, police, fire, DPW, to look at the traffic, and it's going to vary. The state has required, like at which they control that intersection area at Montrose and Salem Street, they want that done at nighttime, okay? We don't have any control over that. The MBTA has said that going underneath the railroad tracks on Broadway will be done 24/7. So, and there are pluses and minuses with that. Pluses are, it gets done a lot quicker, okay? Minuses, obviously, there's noise going on along a period of time, but they have to put a portable sound barrier around that work when they do that. So each place will be different, but it's like any construction project. If we do a water main, we would be dealing with the same issues, or if we do a drainage or sewer main, we're dealing with the same issues. So we're addressing those and trying to make it as convenient as possible. At the end of the day, it's it's estimated to be a nine-month construction project, which is a pretty quick project. And then the roads are paved over, and you won't even know anybody was there.
Okay, so I have one more question, but continuing on this one. So my concern is, how close would this be when they come across Main Street in front of the Galvin and head up the railroad right of way? Isn't that where our box culvert is that feeds the overflow from Crystal Lake out to the Mill River?
Yep.
How close would they be into that?
They will, they'll have to go by it, but they won't, that'll be easy to go by, that's not.
Okay, so there's not any close proximity for that?
Right, yeah.
I think if you look at it. I think if you look at it, under the town, there's numerous utility conflicts. But both departments have done a lot to pre-identify all those. And there's standard and accepted construction practices to mitigate and move around all the issues that we would face.
Well, you know, with utilities, one thing, and I mentioned it before, maybe I didn't highlight it enough, when this project goes through, we will know more about this line than we do about existing water, sewer, drainage, nothing against you, P, gas and electric that's in the ground now. Okay? And we'll also learn about our own system as that goes through. So we will be in a better position to address anything that we have to address now. And that's why the, the impact of that on any work we do is going to be a lot less because we're going to know what's there.
Will you be doing a hard recording of?
Absolutely.
Everything that you see once you dig it all in?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
So just where you have a basic idea of what's under the ground in future cases?
Right.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
The other thing, too, with New Salem Street, mentioned, one, you do have the P, you do have the flooding. The, anytime, and this relates to, and I'm not an expert on either cable type, I will say this, though, about the oil. Oil spills into the ground, EP is going to have you clean that up. Okay? And you're going to have to excavate till you get to the end of it. If it were to, if it was the oil type cable, and you put it in through a wetlands area like New Salem Street, and it spills, you're going to really have a major cleanup because it's going to be in the waterway.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Probably going to Steve on this one. For all the detail work that's going to be taken care of, Wakefield Police has the first right for that, correct?
Wakefield Police always have the first right.
Okay.
There's one case they won't.
All the highway.
No, MBTA.
MBTA.
With the railroad.
I just want to make sure all boys have first right for that.
T Police.
That's for any detail.
I think it's important for the...
I want to see how people get it.
It's important for the board to remember that the reason that the New Salem versus Salem was such a bone of contention was primarily because the abutters were concerned about the EMF. And that, and they talked about New Salem as being a more viable option from their perspective because there would be less, from their perspective, less residents affected. So when we talk about these routes, and it's very clear, Rick, that you feel strongly that Salem Street is the better route for a number of reasons, as you and Peter have identified, it doesn't change the fact that the reason there was such a lively discussion about those two routes is the abutters, especially on Salem Street, were concerned about the EMF going down their street. So the pipe type cable eliminates that EMF concern, especially in light of the fact that the New Salem route you're saying is not physically viable or certainly encouraged by DPW. So I think that's an important consideration for, for us to remember as well. We weren't talking about routes just because people didn't want it down their street. We're talking about it primarily because of the EMF aspect of it. And that would be, again, addressed by the, the pipe type cable replacement.
Thank you. Any other members have comments regarding other components of the siting board?
Steven, Tom, have you talked to your counterparts, your counterparts in Stonem and Winchester? Yet?
Former town council from Stonem, Bill Solomon called me a few days ago. He thought that the decision was likely to be very different from the way it was. And he, he just expressed Stonem's view about preference for the pipe type rather than XLP.
I've been contacted by a couple of members of the Stonem Board of Selectment, the chairman in particular. He wanted to know where we were on the, I guess, the host agreement, for lack of a better word, and the mitigation, which apparently they haven't done too much work with Eversource on yet. They, Stonem, did want to move this down Prospect Street. They did not, were not kind enough to let us know that until we found out by other means.
Yeah, I should point out, we intervened late for a reason. We understood that the route was going to be where it ultimately has been put in the tentative decision, which is fine with us. But we didn't know that Stonem was going to introduce a, an alternative route that takes, that would take it down Albion Street and right through the densest ganglion of utilities in the whole town, the intersection of Prospect and North Ave.
Right down Prospect, ultimately.
Prospect.
Prospect.
Prospect. So, so we intervened at that point.
I think that the, the important point is that we were working with, with these folks from day one. So intervention is not the, the, yeah, it's not the important point. The important point is, when, when were we working with them? And I think the point here is, we were working from day one. It was this board. I remember seeing the plans in your office, Steve, one day. He said, hey, this is something that's coming. And we talked through about kind of all the opportunities around it as well, including, you know, the demands we were going to make in the project, the curb to curb paving, and the benefits we could get for the town out of this. And so there was a lot of activity that went on. And then I think, I can't speak, but my guess here is that other towns didn't have that working relationship. And that's why their, their relationship with, with these folks is one of intervenor and not partner. And I think that's just an important distinction here. We partner with these folks on day one. We didn't take with everything they said, hook, line, and sinker. We didn't get duped by them. It doesn't mean we're in bed with them. Nobody's getting paid. There's none of the crazy things that people like to think. It just means we're a pretty proactive group, and we pay attention to stuff, and we partner rather than fight. And you generally get a lot more. In fact, go figure, the route that favors the town of Wakefield is the one that they, that they proposed and that this board said is the one we're going to use. The folks that partnered on day one. And it's really a testament, you know, that stuff doesn't get to this board. Nobody calls me, or you, or whoever the chair is, or anything like that, and says, this is coming for the town. It all rolls to our town administrator. That's our, our first line of defense. And he's the one who brings this stuff up and says, well, let's partner with these guys and make sure it works for Wakefield. And go figure, it's our route is the one that spends a lot of money.
I thank you. It was a team, it was a team effort.
Yes.
Not everybody's happy with it. And I get that. But I will say that, here's what happened, is that it was coming from Woben to Wakefield. When 128 was out of the mix early on, okay, there were certain, it had to cross the railroad line somewhere. So we worked really hard to try to find that. And then, you know, this board was presented, let's use the rail to trail. Let's get some of that done. Is everybody happy? No, I, I get that. But I think that we tried to make the best deal.
So I'm going to ask both of you, right. Do you have any major concerns after what was said in the past and tonight, today, as to the siting board's decision? Are you in agreement with the siting board's decision from, from the light department's perspective?
Absolutely.
And Rick, are you in agreement with this report in regards to the DPW?
Yeah.
Is it handling everything that we are concerned?
Right, I have no issues.
So I have one question, then, and I would like to direct to National Grid. The route that it's taking now is going down the rail to trail. I'm not sure, when I read the report, I didn't know if there was any mitigation as far as screening where the rail to trail became real close to housing dwellings. Is that part of the?
Yes, the outreach folks are meeting with various people and checking their backyards to see where the trees are applicable.
Right, so there will be some sort of screening between the rail to trail in the person's backyard?
Correct. But remember, we're not, and there's been some rumor to this effect, we're not going to clear cut that rail to trail. There are going to be marked mature trees.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Could you please once again, Phil?
Microphone.
Microphone, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I'm side decision.
How wide is the rail to trail going to be?
The roadway will be roughly 12 feet. And the working area, Dave?
It was about 30 feet.
About 30 feet on the, the working area.
So that, for 30 feet of the, the project, they'll have to be cleared of trees?
Correct, just like those visuals that we had at the open house.
So my, so if the, if this is the 30-foot right of way, and there are houses here where their backyards are open to that because we cleared out some of those trees now, would a buffer be put back in place?
We're open to putting vegetation in their, in their backyard.
I think that's going to be a concern to a lot of them in that area where now it's a straight viewing in, and where they have privacy in the past. Okay?
We recognize that.
That's one, that's 1.1 mile of, well, can't tell, I'm going to say from Water Street to Salem Street. Right, more or less. So that would be my concern, that if we're going to do any type of a mitigation for sound, we should do visual mitigation too, along the bike path, that area, if possible.
Yeah.
If possible. I mean, that was, I didn't see it in here.
It is a question. Just a kind of point of order. I don't mean to interrupt. Just curious. What are our methods to secure, you know, he says, not a problem. I fully take your, your word. And so I'm not suggesting anything other. Do we have a, a side agreement or something with these folks, or some authority, or does everything we, we want or see have to go through?
Here he comes.
You know, he says yes. Do we say, great, you work it out with Rick? We're locked and loaded?
The tape recorder's rolling.
Or do I, do we have to cycle that back as a comment and ask the board?
We will have, and Rick will tell you. We have a...
We have a, see, the four, five-page agreement that you probably had in November for your meeting. We've since updated that with some additional things. So once you determine what you're doing today, then that would probably come back, I would guess, the next meeting to look at and go through.
So as a matter of our actions today, our most important thing today is to decide what comments go back to, to the board here, to the, to the board. Secondary to that is, you know, any other agreements, or whatever it is, that we, we have another crack at that, even at a future meeting, or perhaps also as a result of today. But there's kind of two things in play here. That's great. Okay, so, because I don't, I don't want to have to go back to these guys and say, we want trees next to our rail to trail project.
I think that's the whole purpose of the GOL. We've got all these points identified in the agreement.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any questions from members regarding either the, the siting board's decision, questions to National Grid, questions to town agencies at this present moment? Any last minute questions or concerns? I'm going to appeal to the members of the board to give comments and our guidance as to how we should proceed.
You want a motion?
I'm looking for a motion, then for discussion now on that motion, yes.
Yeah, then I move we, I don't even think I need to make, I move that we have no comments on, on it. Because I'm, I'm assuming I can address my, my wall and decibels and whatever in your agreement, and, and your concern about trees on the...
Right of way.
Right of way. I, I, I guess I make a motion that we respond in the affirmative that we're in concurrence with the, with the board.
Okay, so with that motion, I need a second for discussion.
Second.
Second for discussion. Is there any comments from, Ed?
As a point of order, I, I will be making a motion that we go back with comment that the EFSP considers the pipe type cable. So I don't know how you want to structure those motions because they're obviously different.
Okay, so.
I would think mine would have to go first, and then you.
Mr. Mullin? So, so right now, there was a motion on the floor by Mr. Falvey, seconded by Mr. Longo, that we approve of the siting board's recommendations. No.
No, we're not commenting.
We're not commenting, sorry. We're not commenting.
We have no objection. We ought to not be silent.
We are not making comment to the decision. Now, Mr. Dombrowski wanted to make, add that we would, another motion to add some concern regarding the oil fill piping.
To add comment.
Add comment on that. So I have a motion on the floor now. How do we make vote? Or how do we handle this?
Well, one way of handling it would be just to take the Falvey motion because it would be the negative of the Dombrowski motion. I mean, if the Falvey motion loses, then it's, Mr. Dombrowski can make his motion for comment on the, the pipe type.
Okay, so I have to fulfill the first motion that was made. And if that doesn't pass, then it will go to the Dombrowski?
I, I would read the two motions as alternatives. So I think you could take either and have a vote on it. And that would be, that would be a negative of the other. However, but, but you're telling me that Mr. Falvey's motion came first, so I think that's how you'd handle it.
Okay, so, so the motion would be as made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
So, Mullin, do siting board recommendations, do we normally respond? Does the town normally write back something?
I've been town council since 94, and I've never seen a situation like this. These, okay, it's not like we get EFSP decisions every day. I don't remember one. So, and, frequently, I suspect we wouldn't care. But we do have an opportunity to comment that closes next Thursday. The only reason to comment would be if we were opposed to the decision, the tentative decision.
I have some discussion, my question. I'm, I'm open to adding language that, that says, if you can do this better pipe, we'd be in favor of it. But I would stop short of it saying, we oppose it, or it's conditional approval, or something like that. So, you know, and I, I would amend my motion if, if I heard others say that that's a good idea. If not, then move it as if.
Could I make the comment, then, that could we go along that line and just add, like, a me too clause? That if for some reason the electric company does say, okay, Winchester, okay, Stonem, we're putting that pipe in?
We're okay with it.
We're okay, and we, we want to put it to Wakefield as well, too, to continue the line.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if we, if, I don't want to comment to say I reject this decision because you are not using the pipe, the, the line that we want. But I, I don't have a problem with saying, hey, if you agree with Winchester and Stonem, Wakefield tags on. It would be more articulate than that. I appreciate...
I think we'll leave the drafting to Mr. Mullin. But, so what's our good process? Want me to amend my motion?
Yes.
Yeah, is that, so, do I need to do something, or should I withdraw?
Tom, what do you say?
Why don't we withdraw it? And I think the motion that you want to put on the floor would be that we comment only to the extent of saying, if the board approves the pipe type anywhere, then Wakefield wants it in Wakefield as well.
Okay, then, can I have the floor then to do that?
Well, first you have to withdraw, and then...
Well, I would like the floor to do it.
Yes.
So I would like to withdraw my motion and then make the motion as articulated by Solicitor Mullin.
You told me barrister.
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 Not till you have a wake.
That's, that's the Mullin. Do I have a second on the?
Second.
Second. Do I have any discussion on the second? Ed?
I, I, it seems like we're then trying to determine our own town's destiny based upon what other towns might be pushing for. And I don't agree with that. And I think if we're saying we're willing, hey, if you're doing it elsewhere, yeah, do it to us, too. I think by implication, we're not objecting to the, to doing it here. So if we're not objecting to doing it here, why aren't we asking that it be done here? That, I think that's an important consideration here because you kind of, you kind, I think you kind of can't have it both ways. Oh, yeah, it's fine, as long as other towns are doing it, but we're not going to ask for it. You know, I think that that's, I think that's, I don't know what, I don't even know how the EFSP would, would act on that.
Then I will, you ready?
What are you, what are you asking to do now?
I'll just, then, I'll just, we'll go back to the old motion then.
So, so, so are you going to now withdraw?
Is that what people would like to do? I mean, I'm just kind of looking around. I'm going to read faces here, so.
I just want to keep track of this right now.
You know, I'll leave it how it is. Just there. There's a motion on the floor. I think it was seconded. I have no further comment.
The motion on the floor right now is, could someone read it back to me, please?
Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Mullin?
I understand the motion is that you, we want to comment to the EFSP that if the board approves the pipe type anywhere, then Wakefield wants it within the bounds of Wakefield as well.
Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, and that's just a comment. It's, it's not a conditional approval. It's not a requirement. It's, we'd like, we'd like it. And the opening point of that is, you know, we, we concur. And the opening point of that is, you know, we, we concur. We have no comment on the entire thing, other than, you know, if, if there's a possibility to do pipe type in Wakefield, we wouldn't object to it. That would be okay.
Tony, you have a concern?
Do we want pipe type?
Oh, yeah.
After, after what I heard, do we want pipe type?
All right, I was trying to be, be a sport.
The DPW, the light department, I mean, I've got serious concerns about, you know, 40,000, 50,000 gallons of, you know, toxic liquid, you know?
It's not toxic.
Okay. I think the pipe type would be, I think the pipe type is probably better, actually, at this, right now, it doesn't look like it's gonna be an overwhelming vote for that. But I think it's a, I think it's a great alternative. It's made in the U.S. as well, even though the, the Milagoes comments Brian made, I mean, obviously for 2000, '85, I mean, there's so much detail and scientific detail on this, but I think that if there's a way to point that we prefer the pipe type, that direction would be what I'd like to see. I'm not sure how we can do it with, like Ed said, it's kinda being half, halfway both ways. I don't know if we can suggest to them, if everyone else is on board, that's the way to go. Instead of, maybe we could lead the charge and say, hey, we prefer, we prefer the pipe type.
So what if we said, we prefer, we prefer pipe type, but it's not a requirement or a condition?
Well, I think, to your point, Brian, it's, it's, we can't dictate it anyway. This is a comment. So if we say to them, we prefer pipe type, period, EFSB then, then takes that, and probably the other towns as well. We, we don't dictate ultimately, EFSB, you know, so I think that, but if we say, we were asking, you know, our comment is that we would prefer the pipe type, and then if the other towns do that as well, perhaps the EFSB then may look at that and say, okay, we've got all the communities in agreement on this, and there may be basis for it. And perhaps EFSB may not change its mind, but at least they understand what our position is. So I don't think we're conditioning anything, because we frankly don't have that authority, as I understand it, you know, with the comments. It's just a comment.
So we lead them in that direction.
But I think frankly-
I'm not conditioned, I'm saying, I, I, we don't have any authority over it, but we, we concur, and it's not a conditioned or anything, we concur with one comment. If pipe type is, is, can be done in Wakefield, we wouldn't object to it. We, we prefer it, or wouldn't object?
Prefer.
Prefer it?
Prefer, but, I mean, I think that's, and it also would resolve the whole Salem Street, because I was worried about the water intrusion as well. On New Salem, it's just a nightmare. Everyone, you guys have lived here their whole life, I mean, it's a, it's a horrible situation. So it's always underwater. And I can't imagine trying to clean it up in case something happened with water there. It just, but it resolves both situations. The town, they have the 200 people show up at the meeting in November, I think that resolves that as well. So if you're pointing a preferal direction, if that's a phrase, that would be the way I'd go.
Okay, it's prefer?
Yes.
I wish I could ask Mr. Dion, could you ever ask a little guy? You're the light guy, right?
Come on down.
Because you, you went over it quickly. Yeah, because I'll be, you know, the pro childhood cancer candidate next time, which I could care less about, but that is not where I'm coming from. What are your opinions about using the, this type of pipe? And do you have concerns about the EMF?
I don't have concerns about the EMF. I have, I have less experience with the XLP than I do the pipe type.
Okay.
It is correct that it is an older technology, but in looking at what we, what I know about the XLP, I didn't have a problem with that design, so.
So yours, yours is based on a design standard more than any kind of concern about safety?
Yeah, we don't, we don't, the light department does not have a concern about the EMF issue.
With either way?
With either way.
And your most experienced though is with the pipe type?
Only because coming from Eversource in Boston, we did have this.
Right, okay.
So I, I have experience working with this. As it was noted, XLP is a newer technology, but there's a lot of it installed also, so, and again, as we looked at the design, we didn't have an issue with the, the newer technology.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dion.
Okay, so there's still a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, I believe it's still intact, I'm not sure, it's been modified again, but I think I'm gonna ask for it to be clarified again. And Mr. Mayo's agreeing with me.
I have a question, just, yeah.
Yeah, so, 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 so please, can I hear what the, the, the motion on the floor is right now? Does anyone know what that motion is?
Mr. Mullin?
Well, I think what you're saying-
There's a possibility.
That you would prefer pipe type.
Oh, so if you're, if we're actually gonna massage the motion, if that's what we're doing versus remaking it, then, then I think where we're headed is that we concur with the report entirety, and with one comment, that if pipe time could, pipe-type cable could be implemented in Wakefield, that would be preferable.
Tony.
I like it. I'll give it to you.
It's like a compromise, right? If you're just not, nobody should feel great, just feel okay.
I'm starting to live with that, yes.
If we can walk out here, if we can walk out here in agreement, the-
If you can walk out of here, that'd be great.
Yes, so go ahead.
I'm gonna ask that Mr. Mullin read it back, so we have it right.
Yes, you know, that's fine, because this is a big decision.
I see nods over there from you.
I think the motion is, you want me to respond during the comment period to the EFSB, saying we concur with the tentative decision. However, if it is possible to implement the pipe type in Wakefield, that would be preferable.
Yes.
Okay.
Should we get a second on that?
I think feasible instead of possible, no?
Feasible.
Well, I think it's already identified as feasible.
Shall we open?
I said if it could be done in Wakefield.
Yeah, actually, that's how I put it to the person. If it could be implemented in Wakefield, that would be preferable.
Yep, it could be implemented, yep.